Good evening and welcome to the May 28, 2013 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. The first item on our agenda is to proclaim the week of June 2nd through the 8th as Relay for Life Week. Before I start, I want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones so we don't have any interruptions during the meeting. Is there somebody to receive the proclamation for the Relay for Life? Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about...
Hi, my name is Shelley Arnold and I am one of the event co-chairs. We've brought some of our committee members out here with us this evening, as well as my event co-chair, Barb Gorman. Our 7th Annual Event is on Friday night, June 7th. It starts at 7:00 PM. We relay all night long until 7 o'clock in the morning. So far, we have over 600 registered participants. I believe we have 72 teams registered and we have raised about $123,000 towards our goal of $190,000. One of the things that I like to point out is that last year, our event was the largest in the state of Kansas. We were also honored as one of the top 25 events in the High Plains region of the American Cancer Society. Relay for Life is the signature fundraiser for the American Cancer Society and we are the second-largest fundraiser and researcher for cancer, second only to the US government. So, we help research cancer and we also help with survivors. We have probably about 300 survivors registered to attend our event as well.
Very good. It's a great event. I've been to it and I think it's a great way to shine the light on the problems that exist, those who've survived the disease and I think raise money as well as awareness for our community. And you should be really proud that you're the largest in the state. I think it's a testimony to the people of Lawrence and to the survivors who continue to try and find a cure for all the types of cancers. So, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
Thank you.
Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life is a life-changing event that gives everyone in more than 5,000 communities across the globe a chance to celebrate the lives of people who have battled cancer, remembered loved ones who we've lost, and fight against the disease. And whereas money raised during the Relay for Life of Douglas County, Kansas helps support research, education, advocacy, and patient services. And whereas Relay for Life helps fund more than $100 million in cancer research each year. And whereas cancer survivors are honored with a victory lap as they lead the way around the track, followed by teams who keep a representative walking on the track from 7:00 PM until 7:00 AM because cancer never sleeps. And whereas survivors and those remembered are represented by thousands of luminaria which line the running track, their candles glowing from dusk throughout the night. Now therefore, I'm Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim June 2nd through June 8th of 2013 as Relay for Life Week in Douglas County and encourage citizens to participate in the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Douglas County to be held at Free State High School Track on Friday, June 7th, beginning at 7:00 PM and running to 7:00 AM on Saturday, June 8th, 2013. Good luck with the fundraising.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congrats. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda and all motions or all items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered under one motion and enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that any city commission would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Yes?
7A.
7. Okay. Anything else? Is there an item that a member of the public would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to add claims to 149 vendors of $2,273,226.60. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the claims to vendors and minus item 7A?
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Vice Mayor Amix. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. 7A.
I ask to have it pulled off the Consent Agenda for some discussion. When I read this, I've gone back and read it three times because I'm having a very difficult time with the fact that we're going to allow, in this state, people to carry a dagger, a dirk, a dangerous knife such as a switchblade knife, a straight-edged razor, a stiletto, and for that to be concealed and be able to walk in the public with that, including bars. That I have a problem with. And I... We have taken the oath of office here that says we're here to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public and we're being asked by the state of Kansas to reduce our... or to allow for these dangerous types of weapons that are meant to do one thing, to be allowed to be carried in concealment. And this is without any kind of background check. This is anybody and everybody. That means somebody could bring a bayonet into this room in a backpack and we wouldn't have any recourse on that. So, I have a hard time... I'm going to have a hard time voting for this. In fact, I'm not going to vote for it. I just can't. I just think that it's ridiculous is what it is. And somewhere along the line, people have got to start standing up and making a statement because this is dangerous stuff here.
Yeah. Would you like to share with us our options pertaining to the approval or denial of this ordinance?
I'm going to ask if Randy Larkin, who's our Senior Assistant City Attorney, might be able to comment on some background on this.
In the name of Mayor and Commissioners, Randy Larkin, Senior Assistant City Attorney. This was in response to some legislation implemented by the Kansas Legislature which allows certain things to be concealed and to be carried. We have currently on city code some ordinances that prohibit carrying of knives and various other weapons and we would be in conflict with state law. So, this is just to make sure that we are not in conflict and that's the purpose. Right now, you could defer this, you could vote on it, or you could vote on it and hold off the second reading because I don't know that the legislature's amendment won't take effect until July 1st.
So, we... So, the state has changed the rule. What would happen if we failed to change the rule?
We could do it, but we would be in conflict with state law at that point in time. And there are some provisions that prohibit us from passing a law that would prohibit that which the state allows. So, it would probably be invalidated if it came to court. That's a possibility if it was challenged.
So, if someone came within the confines of Lawrence, had concealed weapons of one of these type, then even if we do not pass this, it's still legal for them to have that and we could not prosecute them for that?
Right. It would be on our books as being illegal. We would have... We could go, but like I said, we would be in conflict with state law and it's our opinion that we would have difficulty prosecuting anyone or enforcing the law.
And you used an interesting terminology. You said, "We cannot pass a law that's in conflict with the state." I assume that we cannot have a law continued on the books that's in conflict with the state. Is that also...
That would be the deal. Someone could challenge it and we would have to remove it, that nature, yes.
But if it's not challenged...
We... There probably are... We probably do have some ordinances on the books that are probably in conflict with state law. This is just a house cleaning matter.
Randy, I thought that we could actually come up, if we wanted to make a code stricter or if we wanted to make our local ordinance stricter, we could do that.
There are certain situations where we don't have to agree. There are some situations where we'd have home rule powers. For example, if the state said you can't have knives, we could make knives, switchblades, razor blades. We could go further than what the state is. The problem that we would have here is that we would be in direct conflict. So, that which the state allows, we cannot prohibit.
Yeah, go ahead.
I say send a message and see what happens. You know, people have got to start standing up to this kind of stuff. How many other cities around the state may find themselves in the same situation? I mean, I think these people and some of these people in Topeka are just totally out of touch. I mean, I really do. I couldn't believe this stuff when I read it last night. I mean, you know, that people can carry these kinds of weapons around in very, very difficult areas that... Look what happened just two weeks ago with the shootings out at the Tavern South. I mean, this is just asking for more trouble.
How does this pertain to schools? I've had a number of students who have brought a knife to school, sometimes by accident, sometimes on purpose. I'm not sure what the truth is, but how does this pertain to the safety of the students in schools?
I don't know of any exception in the state law that... There may be something regarding schools, but I'm not sure I'd have to look into that as to what effect it would have if a child brought a knife to school or something.
Randy, I was just looking at the definition of municipality in that, in the legislation and it appears to specifically exclude school districts and juvenile correctional facilities.
So, I assume that it would still be illegal then to carry that into school.
So, could we face prosecution from the state by having this, our ordinance on the books? I see that...
No.
No. So, it says we won't enact any ordinance. So, if there's ones already on the books, that doesn't... Because it says specifically, "Section municipality should not enact any ordinance, resolution rule, or tax relating to this issue."
Right. The thing is, if we left on the books and someone challenged it, we may end up having to remove it.
All right. Well, I guess we could cross that bridge when we came to it. I agree with you, Bob. I think it's kind of silly, but...
Let me ask you. So, again, Randy, let's say that we were to do nothing, we would change nothing, then the state law supersedes anything, correct?
In this situation, yes. There are some situations where we do have home rule power, but in this situation, yes, the state law would supersede our ordinance.
So, if we deny this ordinance, then again, the state law is the law.
So, if we left on the books, it's not something we could prosecute anyone for, most likely.
How would this affect the police and their... what they do? Because we're telling them that we shouldn't have these knives and articles as the city law, but we... The state law says that you have. Is that causing a significant problem for them?
No. I mean, we are in contact with the police and communicating with them and I think they would be well aware of the state law and that there would be some dichotomy there if we left this on the books.
What were to hap... If we didn't pass this, and Bob, I agree with you, it's asinine what's happening in Topeka. What if we... I mean, could we draft a letter basically saying, "This is ridiculous and we're..." I mean, we may be asking for them to like, make them strike it out for us, but I mean, I think if we want to send a message, that seems like the... That seems like a more public way to do it than just to not pass this ordinance.
We could write a letter anytime we want, obviously, to our delegation and to every member of the Senate and House there.
I think it might be more effective to write other cities in the state of Kansas. I don't know... I don't know how you would pick that out of your numbers. You've got so many, but if we were the only one, that's one thing, but if we're one of 100 or 500, that's something else.
Well, we have a league that we could communicate with, then would communicate with the other cities.
I'm sure that the League of Kansas Municipalities opposed the bill on behalf of cities.
It's my understanding that the league did oppose that and lobbyists...
I know. Oftentimes, they are very active on issues that they see as local control issues.
Well, I think Bob is right. There are many things that I disagree with and that the legislature is going to... is doing, but this goes beyond... When you discuss safety, that's very important and this goes beyond reasonableness. I guess I would be opposed to this if we can say no, even if it's for a short period of time and even if it's just to make a statement. I think Lawrence should make a statement to the state legislature that we are opposed to this and we would recommend that any other city municipalities do the same.
Is there any public comment on this item? Bring it back to commission. I guess we could go ahead and table this.
Well, I'd move that we deny approval of ordinance number 8864.
Second. Motion to deny approving ordinance 8864, amending sections 14-406 and 14-408 of the code of the City of Lawrence.
Clarification again, Mayor. So, then by denying this come July 1, the state law will be in place for the City of Lawrence, which gives the authority without us doing any kind of regulation?
That's correct. The state law would go into effect July 1 and it would supersede our ordinance.
There'll just be an inconsistency, one of which others may exist.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. So, a motion to deny this by... Who did the motion? By Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0 to deny. City manager's report. Or Assistant City Manager's report in this instance.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just two brief items here for you. We wanted to provide a project update that you see there related to some improvements that we have made to the raw water intake at the Kaua Water Treatment Plant. And also, wanted to recognize the first class of the Green Business Leaders and their work on energy efficiency and certainly wanted to recognize Eileen Horn's efforts in that regard as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from Commissioners and City Manager's report?
Thanks.
Very good. We'll move on to the regular agenda and I want to point out that we have a time limit for public comment after each item. If you go past 3 minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear this noise and that'll indicate that you'll need to wrap it up and your time will be up at 4 minutes. First item on the regular agenda is to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of utility easement at 6213 Crystal Lane in the Diamond Head subdivision. David?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dave Cronin, City Engineer. This item is the public hearing for the vacation request we received from the owner of 6213 Crystal Lane. The request was to vacate the eastern 5 feet of the existing 15-foot utility easement that was part of the property and the lot there. The remaining 10 foot of the utility easement will continue to adequately serve the existing underground electric and telephone line. Typical with vacation requests, we notify all utilities and adjacent property owners within 200 feet of the location. So, we've done that and we've received no objections. This is a exhibit here that I brought up of the location. So, the action request tonight is to hold a public hearing and pending any discussion, approve the order of vacation. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for Dave? All right. Thank you very much.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second. Motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0 to open the public hearing. Any comments to this issue?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amix. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the order of vacation.
Third. There's a motion to approve the order of vacation by Vice Mayor Amix, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Second item on the agenda is consider adopting Resolution Number 7023 authorizing the issuance of up to $2.2 million in industrial revenue bonds for the Nuvaunt House East project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Britt Crumcano, Economic Development Coordinator with the City. Tonight, we have a request for a standalone industrial revenue bond for the Nuvaunt House East project. This is actually a Phase 2 project of a Phase 1 that was completed in 2010. They are requesting a standalone IRB in order to get a sales tax exemption on construction materials. The first project was able to get a sales tax exemption on construction materials through a state program that was terminated at the end of 2011. So, this remains one of the few options for companies to get a sales tax exemption on construction materials. Now, for the new Commissioners, I wanted to let you know that industrial revenue bonds are a state economic development program that fosters economic development and quality of life within a community. It is really a conduit financing mechanism in which case the city has no liability for the bonds. The liability for the bonds is totally on the property owners. So, the city is not at risk for paying back the bonds. So, given that, I want to briefly go over a little bit in terms of the request and then also, we have Lisa Nelson here with the Nuvaunt House Company that she can talk more specifically about the project. So, the Nuvaunt House East is a proposed 24/7 healthcare facility that would provide specialized services for age and mental disabled patients. It'll be located right next to the sister facility at 1216 Biltmore Drive in Lawrence. They are requesting a standalone IRB. Normally, we would see IRB requests in conjunction with a tax abatement. That's not the case in this project. They want a standalone IRB with a tax abatement. They have certain criteria that they have to meet with an IRB. They have other criteria they have to meet. Tax abatements, request a cost-benefit analysis, an IRB does not. So, there's no cost-benefit analysis for this project. The capital investment is estimated at about $2.1 million. They anticipate bringing on 10 full-time positions that pay an average of $30,000, $38,500 per job, which is above our community average in that industry. The project will still be subject to property taxes. The current Nuvaunt House pays about $20,000 a year in property taxes, so there would be approximately that much coming in from the Phase 2 project. Some additional considerations, our Retiree Attraction Task Force has established a bunch of goals and some of those goals would be met by a project such as this. They anticipate about 37% of their patients being relocated from outside of the community to the facility and a lot of these patients have their family that lives in Lawrence. So, this would be an asset in terms of bringing those patients closer to families in Lawrence. Finally, I want to just kind of go over what the... A couple of charts here with you. I wanted to give you some idea of the foregone revenues that the city would forego if you did approve this IRB request. I did several scenarios here. Generally, I see anywhere from 30% to 50% of the total project costs as materials cost. The applicant is estimating a 50% materials cost, so I'm just going to go over that category with you. The city, at its 1.55% sales tax rate, would be foregoing about $16,400. The county, about $10,500. And the state, by far, the largest, $66,500, $600. So, that gives you some idea of the foregone revenues. I also wanted to show you some research that was done on similar-type projects and the help that was given to those types of projects so you can see that it was... We have some history behind this. So, the action before you tonight, well, I guess I should say Perk saw this and considered this request a couple of weeks ago at their May 14 meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend the project for approval. And so, the action before you tonight is to adopt Resolution 7023 authorizing the issuance of up to $2.2 million in industrial revenue bonds for the Nuvaunt House East project, if appropriate. So, at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions or we can let Lisa come and talk to you a little bit more about the project itself.
Any questions for Britt?
No, those are very good presentation.
Okay. Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor. First of all, I appreciate being given the opportunity to come before you with this project and I just want to briefly go over the two buildings, what the difference is between the two. Like Britt said earlier, Nuvaunt House West opened in 2010, July of 2010. And on a site plan, it sits right here. This is right across the street from Lawrence Family Medicine to the north. And this is 14... It's a 14-unit assisted living facility. It's licensed as assisted living and we provide care for people who have dementia. It's a secured facility. And throughout the last couple of years, we've realized a need to provide a little bit more care for people who have more physical disabilities. So, the second Nuvaunt House is a totally separate building. It looks like it's connected, but it is not connected. And it'll be similar in size. It's another 14 units. Two of the rooms are large enough for married couples. And I'll just open up the elevation so you can see what the outside of the building looks like. This is the front entrance of the building right here. The building is stone, stucco exterior and clay tile roof, the same kind of architecture that's in the neighborhood around us. And here's the floor plan of the interior of the building, if you can see. I know it's a little bit small. This is the front entrance to the building right here. There's a conference room over here to the left that can be used for meetings or if a family wants to reserve that room for a private dining room or a birthday party or something like that. Right next to it, we have an in-house beauty shop right here. And then all around it are the 14 rooms. The larger rooms are down here on these corners. We have had at Nuvaunt House, couples that wanted to reside at the facility, so we're just giving a little bit larger option for couples to live there. This area is all open, fireplace with a flat-screen TV above it, dining area, and then the kitchen is open also, which is... Just brings that home-like flavor to the facility and people can smell the cooking and see what's going on in the kitchen. And then we have a sunroom off to the back here that if you go out back and then go to the west, it will connect... The yards will connect, but both facilities are fenced in. The rooms range in square footage from 300 to 530 square feet. They all have private bathrooms, private showers, fully handicap accessible. We have a whirlpool bathing room down here and that is... and that is also our tornado shelter. It's a concrete block walls with a concrete ceiling. And a garage here. Here, we plan to purchase a handicap van to use also. So, that's, you know, the building design. We're designing it so that we can care for people that, like I said earlier, have greater physical disabilities. We're going to have a track in the ceiling that will go from the resident's bed into the restroom so that we don't have to, staff don't have to lift people. We can put them in a sling and move them on the lift. The whirlpool bathing tub is a special tub that we don't have to lift people up, but the chair will slide right into the tub. And so, it's a very secure building. We have wireless nurse call throughout the facility. In case somebody needs help, they can push a pendant. 24-hour care, seven days a week. And we pride ourselves on really providing resident-centered care. And so I appreciate the consideration for industrial revenue bonds and would be open to answer any questions.
Do you guys have any questions?
Just, when a couple is there, I assume just one of them would have to be impaired, and the other one would attend to them.
You know, most of the time, we find that it's an older couple and both do need some type of help. We haven't run across that situation, that one person doesn't need help yet. But that, that's a scenario that sure could happen.
But they would be allowed in? Would they have the same ability to use this if one of the couples was impaired? Or do they both have to be impaired?
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't both have to be impaired.
And your whirlpool room, which doubles as your tornado shelter, can fit all of your staff and residents in it safely?
Yes. Yeah, the architect made sure that it's enough square footage for 16 residents. We have 14 licensed rooms, but with a couple of rooms, we'll be licensed for 16. So that, along with three to four staff members. It's cozy, but will fit.
Sure.
Any other questions here? Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
You have two to weigh in on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on Item 2 regarding the $2.2 million of industrial revenue bonds? Okay, seeing none, is there any commissioner discussion on this, or?
I think it follows what we've been doing along for other agencies like this. And I think it sounds like a very good project. Obviously, the first section filled up very quickly, so there must be a genuine need to expand it. So, I'd move we accept Resolution Number 7023.
Second.
Just one comment, if I could, Mayor. Excuse me, Bob. The organization Nuvaunt House is, I've had the opportunity to go out and visit and actually provide barbering services to at least one of the individuals that lives there. This is a top-notch organization. We should be very proud to have Nuvaunt House and all the folks that work there in our community. So, thank you all very much, and the job that you do is, I applaud you.
Very good.
And I would add too, that, I mean, for an investment for local taxes coming in at $27,000 for us to have a quality facility like that, and this is a no-brainer. That's an investment that we can make on behalf of our community to encourage them to continue to do the great work that they're doing and that their staff does to do this. So, I'm happy to vote for this, for sure.
Great. All right, well, it sounds like everyone's in favor of this. And I think I had a motion by Shum, second by Reardon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. And then the third item on our agenda is to receive a petition regarding the proposed temporary transit area for Vermont Street for our transit system.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Bob Nugent, I'm the Transit Administrator for Lawrence Transit. In recent weeks, there's been considerable discussion and some concerns raised about the city commission's approval to have a temporary transit hub at the 800 block of Vermont Street. I would like to give you a little bit, this has been a long, kind of drawn-out process that we've been looking in and around the downtown for some kind of hub to operate. But I want to give you a little background, kind of how we got to this place with the petition and what's happened, kind of leading up until now. Ninth and Massachusetts, as most of you probably already know, what has been our historic location for the transit hub in the downtown. We'd operated there for about 10 years. With the construction at 901 New Hampshire, we had to move out of there. We decided to move all our operations from the two kind of catty-cornered locations at Ninth and Mass to Ninth and New Hampshire. And we did that for the simple reason is we were going to have to move half of our operation to Ninth and New Hampshire. It would've been like two blocks for people to transfer from one bus to another. Been very difficult to do that. So we decided to move everything all at once, all over to Ninth and New Hampshire. So, we were operating over there for quite a while. As you know, the building has been done for quite a while at 901 New Hampshire. When that was going on, we, it was right around the same time that the library discussions were beginning. Staff took an initial look at whether we could incorporate a transit hub or some kind of transfer location in, say, the parking garage at the bottom of the library's parking garage. As you know, Kentucky and all the activity that goes on around the library, around the park, around the firehouse, the senior center, the pool, all of that going on. There's a lot of pedestrian movement, there's a lot of vehicular movement, there's a lot of activity there. Although we operate our buses in corridors like Jayhawk Boulevard, where we have lots of pedestrian activity and have lots of potential conflict there, we opted to not do that at Kentucky as part of the library. So that was kind of our first foray into looking for more of a permanent home in the downtown. As the discussions with the Santa Fe came up, and we were kind of looking for a way for a secondary use for the Santa Fe Depot, we took a look again, still looking for a location. We took a look again at whether we could actually move our transit operations into the Santa Fe Depot. That, we talked about for quite a while. We did some analysis, did some preliminary engineering work to make sure that we could operate at that facility. But in the long run, when it all came down to it, there was so, it was such a small footprint that we were having to operate on. And the building, we really weren't able to negotiate enough buildings so we could put our offices in that same facility, which is what we were wanting to try to do also, along with amenities and stuff. So, we backed out of the Santa Fe. We just said, you know, it really wasn't going to work for us as a transit operating facility, so we backed out of that. When all that was, while all of that was going on, you know, we decided it was about time to move back not to Ninth and Massachusetts. Well, that didn't play out so well. And so we didn't have the opportunity to move back to Ninth and Massachusetts, so we decided to go on and stay at Ninth and New Hampshire, where we're currently located. But as you know, we've got something else that's going to be built, where we're currently operating our transit, our transfer facilities at Ninth and New Hampshire. So, and that is definitely imminent. It's probably, it could be within 30 to 60 days, my understanding, of them starting to dig on that lot over there. So with that said, you know, we really don't have a place in the downtown to operate. At the end of last year, we came to commission and asked for a temporary location at Vermont in the 800 block of Vermont. Prior to us coming to commission, we did a mailing to all of the 800 block of Vermont and Massachusetts, as well as downtown Lawrence, Inc., and told them our intentions and what we were planning on doing by moving over to Vermont. So that decision was made back in October, November, I think, of last year. The other thing that's going on is we are right now in the middle of, or getting near the end of a transit center location analysis. As some of you may remember, we came to you at the end of last year and was asking for the opportunity to go out and look for another location somewhere in our community. You know, we tend to be at conflict in the downtown. One, because there's not a lot of turf in the downtown that we can operate on. We would like to get off of the street, because right now, we line up on the street, basically on a block on the street. We'd like to get that off. If you've been to Topeka, if you've been to a lot of larger cities, they have off-street transfer hubs in those downtown areas or in other areas. So we're going through that study right now. We actually are, we've done a couple, a couple different runs, GIS runs and stuff, and we found a number of locations, which probably toward the middle of this month, you're going to be hearing what those final locations are. So you'll have an opportunity to see what we've been working on over the last few months. Parking is really the issue, I think, with the petition, and it is an issue in the downtown, as we well know. In looking at the parking, we were going to give up to move to Vermont, and the parking was going to be lost at Vermont. By moving into the 800 block of Vermont, we were going to take away 13 parking places in there. I understand most of them are five-hour parking places. But giving back, we were going to give back a total of 32 parking places at various locations, the northwest corner of Ninth and Mass, the southeast corner of Ninth and Mass, the southwest corner of Ninth and New Hampshire, and the northeast corner of Ninth and New Hampshire, the northeast corner of Ninth and New Hampshire, the southeast corner, the northwest corner of Rhode Island. So in total, we were giving, we're going to give back 32 spaces. Now, we don't know what's going to happen with the construction. Once the construction starts at Ninth and New Hampshire, what kind of impact that's going to have on parking. My understanding is they, that some of those will be, there won't be a net of 19 additional spaces once we move to Vermont. There may be some less than that because of construction. But anyway, that's kind of where we are. I know some of you haven't been around for some of these discussions, some of you have. I just wanted to bring you up to date on kind of where everything is. The parking places that we are talking about, let's see here, get this up. This is the location of the parking places. This, of course, is the location of the 800 block of Vermont, or we're removing 13 spaces. You can see generally, most of them are along the Ninth Street quarter, and then some along the New Hampshire quarter. Of those spaces, we did, whoops, we did, I don't know how to get back where I need to be. But we did an analysis of walking distance from some of the areas that we're going to reintroduce parking to where we're taking away. The distance from mid-block on 800 to mid-block on Massachusetts was about 1,000 feet walking distance. That's not cutting through the buildings. I know that you can cut through some of the stores and stuff on Massachusetts. But actually, walking around the block was going to be 1,000 feet walking. The locations on Ninth and Mass, those were going to be like around 600 to 700 feet walking distance, the same location on Mass. So, you know, some of the locations, or some of the new parking places will be closer, some will be just a little bit farther away. And then, again, we do have the library, parking garages will be going in. So, and we know that's going to be a net gain of 100 to 200 spaces, I think, by the time we're done there. So, anyway, if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to try to answer.
Thank you.
Bob, the spaces that are along New Hampshire Street and also Ninth Street there, once the construction begins, I assume that we're not going to allow parking to be there. So those 20 spaces that are on the east side of New Hampshire Street and along Ninth Street are probably not going to be allowed to be there.
I agree. And we don't know what they're going to be asking for at this point.
Okay, so we're going to have a net loss of one space then, if you take those out of that equation?
We may well, yes.
Bob, do you know, can you give us a timeline on, or an estimated timeline, on finding a permanent hub for the transit system?
Well, we'll come to commission probably in the middle of this month, or the middle of June, with three locations. And our intention is to bring the three best locations we have. Then we'll try to find out which one of those locations are going to work best for us. It really determines on what kind of location we find. I don't think we're going to find a perfect location we could put a 15-ton vehicle in a parking lot or on a piece of blacktop out there. We're probably going to have to do some construction to it. I keep saying the earliest we could probably do anything would be August of 2014, would be the earliest. And that would be an ideal location, where we'd have have to do very little with like signalization and very little with paving and that kind of stuff that we can move in fairly quick. So, best a year, I would say.
Okay, and then, it's my understanding that we're not going to move from Ninth and Vermont until a building permit is pulled and construction actually starts at that location, is that correct?
Correct, true correct. Yeah, well, we've been, the last time we had to move off Ninth and Mass in that location, we moved in very short order because they said the construction was going to happen. It didn't happen for like three months after that. And it really hurt a lot of our passengers. They didn't know where to catch the bus. If they weren't riding every day or every week, they were standing on corners trying to. So we wanted to make sure this time that we communicated what we were doing to the public, so the riding public would know what we're doing and we could work with some of those issues.
And one last question. The signers of the petition asked that we look at a different location of 10th and Kentucky Street. Can you comment on that site?
Yeah, our initial analysis of that is, one, between the curb and actually the sidewalk, there's about 10-foot of sod area or grass in there. There's some turf in there, which we, we have to operate in a place where we can deploy lifts, because part of the people that we transport are people with disabilities that are using wheelchairs. So we would have to do something in that general, in that grass area so we could accommodate those in wheelchairs. That's not to say, at the Vermont location, we might have to do a few things to accommodate some wheelchairs there. One, because we have a very narrow sidewalk. So we're still going to have to do a little bit of wiggling to try to operate there. And the other real issue at 10th and Kentucky was, we need about 300 feet of curb space in order to line up all our buses. That curb there is not 300 feet, it's like 230 feet or so. So we really couldn't get all our buses in there, which would mean we'd have to park around the corner. And then we had issues with line of sight and all those things with automobiles and conflict with automobiles there too. So, it would make it difficult to operate there.
So their suggestion is, one side of that 10th Street?
If we'd operate on both sides, we could possibly do it on both sides. That would be in front of the church on that side. We didn't look at that, we just looked at the one side over by the old Lawrence.
On the north side of 10th Street?
Right.
Any other questions for Bob?
So, Bob, excuse me, Mayor. A decision has to be made, a final decision, on where the location's going to be at the time those permits are pulled to build the hotel. Because we've got to have this moved, right?
Yeah, time is fleeting for us, that, you know, we thought we did the right thing by coming to commission, you know, at the end of last year, so we'd be well-prepared. And now we're right back to kind of square one again to, if the permit's pulled, then we have about 15 to 30 days to vacate, and then we have that place to go.
Okay.
All right. So, I just, can I just ask a question? They're requesting that this be put on Kentucky Street itself, or 10th Street?
It would have to be on 10th Street. We couldn't, I wouldn't want to operate on Kentucky. Kentucky and Tennessee are too high speed.
I wouldn't either. Okay.
One last question.
Bob, if we were to ask you to evaluate the 10th Street location using both sides of the street, if that evaluation were to come, say, okay, we can put, you know, the buses at that location, the parking would still be available on Sunday for people that go to church, the three churches that are in that area, correct?
Yeah, we don't operate on Sunday.
Right, so it could be signed that parking's left, okay.
You know, just a comment though, before we listen. This is a NIMBY, not my backyard. So, these people are concerned about the parking, and rightfully so. We're all concerned about parking downtown. So, it seems to me like if you're moving from one location to another, you're going to satisfy this group of people, you're just going to have a bunch more come down who have businesses or churches or schools or whatever at the next site. So, I don't know that you ever solve a problem by moving. It's just that the solving of the problem will be when we find a bona fide center that works well, and it's probably, well, it's not going to be downtown, is what my information says.
It could well be downtown, just whatever's the best location, but the consultant.
I thought that had been ruled out, but.
Not at this point yet.
Not yet, okay.
Okay, thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Public comment? Make sure you state your name and all that good stuff so everyone at home can know who you are.
My name's Mike Riling. Seems like my job recently has been to come down here and talk to you about parking issues. I did want to thank you for the, for the last time I was down here, because the compromise or the settlement that got worked out with moving part of the 10-hour lots, parking meters, across the street has worked very well. So, at least, coming down here was a good activity that night. I hope we're as fruitful tonight as that turned out to be. But I did want I hope we're as fruitful tonight as that turned out to be, but I did want to tell you that that was a good, good solution, so I thank you for working that out. The problem with downtown, of course, is that parking is always an issue. It's the number-one issue that all merchants have, so anytime you start talking about taking away parking spaces from merchants, you, you hit not only one block, but it's a domino effect, because you take away spaces here, it dominoes over to the other place. If we were putting back spaces the way the report seems to indicate, it might be different, but the reality is, I think we all know, most of the spaces aren't coming back, they're going to be used for construction, so there is going to be a net loss, and so there is going to be a loss of parking spaces. I understand the argument about 10th Street, and that, you know, if you move somebody off of there, then somebody else is going to be inconvenienced, but I would suggest to you that since the shelters moved, that has created kind of a void that hasn't quite been filled completely. So really, the moving of the shelter kind of created a little bit of a space where the demand isn't there that there is where these spaces that are being taken away now. So I don't believe that the impact would be the same in the area where the old shelter was. I don't believe that area's been rented, and so I don't believe it's fair to say that the impact's going to be the same. I think the impact at the current location that's proposed is going to be a much greater impact, but at least like you to consider it. I mean, one of the things that is, I mean, we read the staff report, and there was really nothing said about the 10th Street location, so we didn't even know if that was considered when, when the report was written. In any event, I do not, we do understand that there's going to have to be some concrete work done in that area in order to get it up to speed, but if you look at the cost of providing parking, certainly when we were told about the garage, putting in some extra area for wheelchair accessibility is going to be nothing compared to the cost of trying to replace these parking spaces. I did indicate to a number of people that I would just let them raise their hands, because they didn't want to get up and say the same thing, so if you want to raise your hand, you just indicate that you support this position, so that you don't have to come up here and talk. I welcome anybody to come up here and talk, it's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is Jim Bateman. I'm, my wife and I own the Arnbar in the 900 block of Massachusetts Street, and currently I'm the president of Downtown Lawrence. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the board of the organization. We have board members from the 7, 8, 9, 1000 blocks of Massachusetts Street, as well as cross streets, and we have members from retail, service, professional groups, all on our board. While the DL was not active in initiating this petition, I'm here to say that we wholeheartedly support the effort to encourage you to have staff look more closely at the West 10th Street location, using both sides of the street. I see that in the staff report, and as Mr. Nugent pointed out, we were notified downtown about this possible change in November. But I think a couple of things have come up since that time that we want to acknowledge have made us feel a little more aggressive, if you will, in bringing this subject back up. One, a small matter, but the previous commission grabbed a few parking spaces to use for the farmer's market, and that kind of caught our attention, and we were a little bit surprised by that. More importantly, we did learn, as you're hearing here tonight, that we did not know that there was, and there was not, I guess, any consideration of that West 10th Street location. So tonight, we would really encourage you to ask staff to review that location again, to see about the options that we could have there for this temporary location for the bus shelter. I agree with what Mike Reiling just said about the impact at the West 10th Street location not being as significant, perhaps, as something that's more in the heart of downtown. This afternoon, there was one car parked in the entire space, in any of the spaces between Vermont and Kentucky on 10th Street, and that's not what was parked in those 13 spaces along Vermont Street, or more than one car there, certainly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jim. Additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. So we have a conundrum.
Well, I don't, I think we ought to look at it. If we haven't looked at it, we ought to look at it, and we've got a little bit of time. I don't think that you're going to, let me ask Bob Nugent, how long would it take to get an analysis of that location?
We could take a look at it probably in a week or so, and so maybe by, give us two weeks probably would be the best for us to get out and really look at it and put some pencil and paper.
That seems like a very reasonable request, and that way we know, we've got all the facts, so.
One of the, one of the items that I just wanted to mention, commissioners, is where it appears that we've had some of the greatest conflict in the downtown areas, when the buildings are very close to the street, and we have a very small space in which to operate. And you all may recall some issues that we had really at the current location on the north side, that we had to do some adjustments there with that former Black Hills building. And we also had some similar complaints when it was located at the Ninth and Massachusetts Street location. That would also be, I think, one of the things that we could look at, but I think when you're going to be that close, if there were a new use that would come into that former shelter building, we're pretty close there, and then on the church side, we're pretty close, but we can certainly bring back a report and kind of indicate to you what those possibilities are.
You also have another point of conflict there, in that that's where the Link Kitchen is, and they operate, I know it's on Sunday, which you don't operate on, but there's also another day of the week, or two days of the week that they operate. I'm not sure which ones those are, but...
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I think.
Excuse me?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I think, is when they operate. But, but I would say that there are a lot of folks that go to that kitchen that do utilize public transportation, so it would be advantageous for them to, to have that closer than, you know, 800 block of Vermont or Ninth and Mass. And a lot of social services around that area, First Christian Church, First United Methodist Church with the Jubilee Cafe, you've got Trinity Episcopal with their food pantry right there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of folks utilize our public transportation system, that it would be a good spot for it to be close, proximally speaking, for them to just get off the bus and be able to utilize those services.
All right, any comments?
Thinking about funerals.
Yeah.
I see no harm in waiting, and I think the points that were brought up tonight, especially about the parking, being much less there than when you go north, I think are very good points, you know. Once again, they will bring back a report that talks about the information that I think was just brought up, plus safety issues, and I think it'll be easy to look at that and decide what to do at that time.
Agreed. Are there any other, are there any other spaces, you know, 600, 600 feet approximately on both sides of the street, that we can look in, some of those shorter blocks, any other locations we want them to evaluate also?
I'll let Bob comment. I mean, we really have, over the last couple of years, as we've looked at moving it around, we've really looked extensively in the, in the downtown area for what, what possibilities might be there. You know, the, one of the big issues is really in almost every area, I think, as you had mentioned, Commissioner Shum, is everyone likes their parking close, and disrupting any parking is, is an issue.
That's a problem with the street lineup of buses. If you line up buses on a curb, you take away parking in the downtown. So no matter where we locate in the downtown, it's going to be the same issue. You know, the NIMBY thing came up, no matter where we're going to be, it will be an issue with parking one way or another. So that's the reason why we're really looking for a more permanent location, that's not on the street, that won't be in conflict with parking, no matter where it is.
Bob, how often are there buses, because I, I mean, you know, I work in East Lawrence and go down there a lot, I don't think I've ever seen more than two buses lined up at the same time.
At that location, we could have as many as seven at one time.
Okay.
I was just counting, is there about 12 spots, metered spots on that section? Did you, have you looked at that?
The 800 block of Vermont?
Yes, no, the 1000 block that we're just talking about is not...
It's going to be about the same amount of parking.
Yeah, about the same number, at least metered spots. I was just counting meters, looks like there's, there's 13 or 12, so. Yes.
Bob, when, we talked about the parking last year or so, when Trainers Building and all came up, did you count that parking in there as part of your study that you did? You remember?
No, not on the street.
You did not?
No, we were...
I knew that we were talking about the lots, but...
We were just doing lots.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, I think, I think it'd be wise to look at, you know, this location, get an evaluation down, and a couple of weeks, I guess, we make the decision based on, you know, final, final bit of information that we would have.
Could we also send a letter to the Downtown Clergy Association? Because that's First Christian, Plymouth Congregational, First United Methodist, Trinity Episcopal, all the churches in that area, to, to just see what kind of feed. My inclination is that they would be supportive of public transportation being closer to their facilities, but I'd want to know that for sure.
Okay, yeah, say we do that, get their feedback, positive or negative. Count the spaces, figure out the square footage, or linear footage will have a curb, it looks like it's about the same as Ninth and...
And also, including in their mayor, that, you know, parking would not be taken away on Sunday, but would be available on Sundays.
Right, yeah.
We will make that communication and bring that report back to you.
Yeah, well, so we're supposed to receive the petition and direct staff is appropriate, so we need a motion probably to direct staff.
I would move that, a motion that we accept the petition presented tonight, direct staff to review the 10th and Kentucky site for possible location of the city bus.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Amick, all in favor, say aye. Aye. As opposed, motion passes 5-0 to direct staff. Thank you very much for coming by today.
Thanks.
Hopefully find another semi-permanent location for the bus. The next is, item on the agenda is public comment of a general nature. Do we have anybody here to speak to the commission for general public comment?
Hello, my name is Ben Jones. I'm a resident here in Lawrence, live here with my wife, and actually, I brought some materials for the commission, if you'd like those. A group of about a dozen residents here in Lawrence began meeting a month ago to discuss the issue of domestic drones, and there are people across the political spectrum, Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, and we were all concerned about the growing use of drones domestically, and wanted to start to work together to see if we could do anything at the local level to address this issue. And specifically, we want to request that the commission might consider a resolution on this issue, and I'll come back to that with some of the specifics we'd like to see in a resolution. But first, wanted to give some background on this issue. Domestic drones have become an issue as of late, because in 2012, Congress passed the Federal Aviation Administration Reauthorization Act. And this act had within it provisions, basically opening up US skies to drones. And the FAA has been charged with developing safety guidelines to help with the incorporation of drones into US airspace. And one of the problems with this bill is that the FAA's focus is on safety guidelines. They don't want, you know, the drones crashing into each other or interfering with flights. But what has sort of been missed in this is addressing potential privacy concerns about drones. This is a new technology, a powerful technology, and there are some concerns that it could potentially be abused with nonstop surveillance. And so across the country, you've seen two noticeable trends in response to drones. First, in areas where there's been proposals to introduce drones, a lot of times, there's been backlash because of the lack of privacy concerns in place. So for instance, Seattle, Washington, the police department there bought two unmanned helicopters to begin a drone program, and that was, is a very controversial, there's a lot of citizen backlash, and earlier this year, the mayor of Seattle canceled that program and ordered that the drones be returned. Other municipalities and states have taken a more proactive approach, and sort of recognizing that this technology will be more common, and taking steps to put in place safeguards to make sure that civil liberties are protected as it becomes more common. So for instance, the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, recently passed a resolution, becoming the first in the nation, putting in place guidelines for the use of drones. And I actually enclosed a copy of that resolution in the materials that went around. And so for us, that, you know, our concerns, the two main concerns posed by drones, one is the issue of surveillance. It is a very powerful technology, and drones already have the capability to stay aloft for several days, and the expectation is that, that capability will continue to grow. And so drones are, they are cheaper than other technologies than, say, a helicopter, for instance, and so there's the worry that because there's less of a financial barrier to purchasing them, there could be a temptation to acquire drones, and they could be used for nonstop surveillance. The other concern is that weaponized drones are being developed. There's actually one by the name of a Shadowhawk drone, which carries tear gas.
You can keep talking, Ben, it's time's up, stop, sorry.
Sure. And so, which actually has been purchased by a sheriff's department in Texas, and so the worry about these types of drones is that, especially if there's a protest or demonstration going on, if one of those is hovering overhead, obviously, that would have a chilling effect on people trying to exercise their First Amendment rights. And so, we don't want to be anti-drone or anything, but we would like the commission to consider a resolution placing some restrictions on the use of drones by the city, should the city ever acquire them in the future. And on the last page of the presentation I handed out, the specific sort of items in the resolution would be a moratorium on purchasing any drones in the city until the state were to develop guidelines on this issue. The second would be a ban on all weaponized drones if the city should ever purchase them in the future. And then lastly, a ban on using drones to carry out surveillance and collecting evidence admissible in court. So that's, and we would, if this is something the commission would like to take up, we'd love the opportunity to work with commission staff in drafting a resolution and coming back to the commission.
Sounds good. We will look at this, and your contact information is on here, I believe?
I can sign it in.
If you can get your email, or put your email address on there, too, then we'll get back to you about whether or not there's...
Are you more worried about the private use of drones, or the public use of drones?
We're, our main concern is the public use of drones. Obviously, there, there are other potential concerns with the private use, but our main goal is sort of having, setting guidelines for the city moving forward in terms of how to use drones.
Are you more worried about surveillance use of drones, or the mechanization and the use of weaponry on drones?
Both, both. So in terms of what we'd like to see in a resolution, we'd like both those issues to be addressed, and there's sort of, I mean, for the weaponry aspect, and I should say first off, like, I'm not aware of any plans, you know, for the city to buy weaponized drones or anything, it's just that this technology is going to become more common, and I think, you know, it's important to have some guidelines in place as it becomes more common. But in terms of the weaponized, you know, weaponizing drones, you know, it's pretty easy just to have a clear ban on that. I think there's a general consensus that that's a dangerous technology to use domestically. In terms of surveillance, you could take sort of one of two approaches. One is sort of banning evidence collected by drones from being admissible in court. Another one is requiring law enforcement to obtain a search warrant before ever using a drone to carry out the surveillance. a drone to carry out surveillance. And I should mention too, we have been in touch with the police chief, who's been, who's happy to meet with us, so we hope to talk to him and also get his feedback soon.
Just real quick, Mayor. So that there, you talked about in the report, I just happened to go through it real quick, Ben. Talked about the state is considering legislation that being acted that, you know, talking about the same thing you're asking us to do, correct?
Right. So at the state level, this past legislative session, House Bill 2394 was introduced. And basically, what that bill said is that law enforcement would be banned from using drones that carry a lethal payload or from using drones to carry out surveillance. And that bill, it was introduced late in the session. It wasn't passed, but it will carry over to 2014 and could be considered then. But sort of right now, there aren't guidelines at the national level, there aren't guidelines at the state level, nor at the local level. And so we're sort of coming here to see, you know, if we can get this, get some guidelines at the local level first.
Have any idea how we'll consider this or...
Well, I just need to read this. He suggested some language for a resolution. And we are good at passing resolutions, so we'll just take a look at it and see if it moves in favor of that, and we'll vote on it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think there's some, there's some good uses from drones. I mean, I could see where if, we don't have exactly force, but you know, if there are forest fires or if there were severe accidents on the turnpike, on icy pileups, where observation from a drone would be very helpful in order to help along with emergencies. So I don't know that all this action is going to be, I mean, I don't know that drones specifically are evil and should be withdrawn, but I certainly respect what you're saying in terms of weaponry and surveillance, so...
Yeah, and I entirely agree in terms of search and rescue, spotting forest fires, not really something we do in Kansas, but there are a number, even with, for crops, you know, surveying potential crop damage after a storm. So there are a lot of good uses for drones, and we wouldn't want a complete ban, but just some common sense guidelines to make sure civil liberties are protected.
And I would say to me, if we're spending money, I would, I would think we'd be spending it on officers to put on the ground and better facilities and better equipment than drones. I mean, I, that just seems like a no-brainer to me for our community. I mean, we can't be putting resources there.
I'd almost, Mayor, I'd almost be willing to bet that when we consider the budget this year, there's no money in there for a drone.
No drone.
No drone. I'm just thinking out loud, no new project this year.
I'm saying that.
Okay, there we go. You heard it here first. So we have time to put together if we choose to.
There's always federal funding for unique types of law enforcement and surveillance type activities. We got ourselves an armed vehicle to help with certain situations recently paid for by the federal government. So if they're in a, they're in a tizzy to help drum up the drone business, I'm sure there'll be plenty of dollars out there. But we will take your information under advisement. We'll discuss it and we'll put it on the agenda if commissioners want to discuss the, some of the, let's call it safeguards in place for the use of drones. And I've read the language and none of it seems, you know, too far-fetched. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Additional public comment? Please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Sean Hall. I'm the general manager for Club Magic, the club that was, had the recent incident that occurred on the weekend of, I believe, the 24th. I'd just like to address the board and Mr. Shum that I am in compliance and in favor of the community outrage of the incident that occurred. I'd like to speak for the club and tell you that we're in practice to do better as a facility. We're outraged as well as what happened this weekend. I'm in agreeance, but I have to be on the side of the club as well. You know, we try to, we try to make every accommodation that we can possible to create a safe environment for our patrons, our staff members and such. And moving forward, there are several things that we've done to kind of get ahead of this issue and get ahead of the problem. We do realize that there's a stigma that comes along with some of the entertainment that we've been providing. Prior to that incident, we had two events left on the books. One was the K-Styles events that happened on the 24th, and we have another one on the books that is June 1st. That is another rapper that kind of brings that same crowd. I want to let the city board, the council, know that we have canceled that event. In conjunction, we're trying to become better business people and making better business decisions. We've met with the public, and when we put out a meeting notice to meet with the public, we only had a handful of people come up. We had the city, the media come. We had the commander of the police force come. We had a couple residents come. We had a couple business owners in the same facility come to our event. All I can say is that we're going to be working diligently. I'm available for information or contact, but moving forward, we're going to try to focus on a 35 and up crowd on Friday nights. We will be turning to 21 crowd. We'll no longer be doing 18 and under for the facility. We're going to be doing a Thursday night, alternative night. I'm not sure what that exactly means, but the age limit will be 21. We're going to be closing our doors at 3 o'clock. We're going to constantly try to do better. If we knew better, we'd do better. I've only been ahead of the club for two months prior to this incident. I'm quickly finding out, you know, that things are different here in Lawrence. And I love Lawrence. I go fishing here. I go by my fishing permits. I go to the library. My son skateboards here and stuff like that. So we love the city, and I don't want to be the problem. I don't want to be the cause for drones and stuff and so forth, you know? So we're diligently trying to move forward. And I understand the anger and so forth of the people that want a safe environment and a safe community. And as the manager of the club, I have the ability to run the club, and if they don't see the way that I see things, I will no longer be there. But as of this moment forward, I have the ability and the authority to make those set changes. I'd like to meet with Mr. Shum at some time to discuss further actions that we can take place and truly try to become a better tenant of the facility and of the community.
Well, I respect and appreciate you coming to us with this. It's a difficult balancing act. I understand that it's one of those things, it's partly outside your control, but it sounds to me like you're taking it to heart and understanding some of the things that we need to do to improve the likelihood that things will be safer and less likely to have any kind of violent activities. You know, it can happen anywhere. But I think it's more likely to happen if we're not paying clear and close attention to the patrons and to those just hanging out in the parking lot. You know, it's, that's outside your control in some cases. But we take it very seriously, and we're going to focus on making sure that if it's in the power of the community to help, then we're going to do that, just so you know.
Yes, sir. And I, I'm, I can give you advice on what not to do as far as the aspects of the actions of what we've been kind of inherited upon. That's no excuse. The owners, the owners brought me in because they were aware of the issues that they had. They not only inherited the reputation of the former owner of the club, but they also inherited the patrons, some of the promoters and so forth. And so it was sort of like, Mr. Shum has stated, that it seems like that it's a new owner, but it's still the same, same business. And that's where I'm here to take that off of the spectrum of Club Magic. And in doing so, you know, we've hired new promoters, and this was prior to the event. I know it sounds like, you know, what they're saying, they made changes, but we were in the process of making these changes, and we still are in the process of making these changes. And this was all done prior. We stepped up security the night of that event and tried to make every precaution that I, you know, that I thought possibly that could be made. I think, going, looking back over, could we've done things better? Yes. I think moving forward, the thing we'll do is to alleviate that even off the board. It would be less stressful for the police department, it'd be less stressful for the owners, it'd be less stressful for the community. And that's where we're based at, and that's what we're trying to move in that direction.
Any other comments for him?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming over tonight. And we're not picking on you specifically. We have had other clubs in the city that we've gone after their licenses and have received their licenses because they have been a nuisance. To a certain extent, you have a difficult time with your crowd. You do have, your, the place has a reputation.
Yes.
I do believe what you're saying is true. You're still have a number of the people who are there that have been customers in the past. But at the same time, there's some things that you can do to improve that crowd. And I think in the paper, you stated them. And, you know, the first question I'd have is why do you stay up until 3 o'clock in the morning when the liquor time is 2 o'clock?
Well, Mr. Shum, we have a restaurant, and our prior way of thinking was to stay open and gain that extra revenue, because we're not, we're not, we're not getting the crowds from mass, we're not getting the crowds from other genres. So we would get, we would get the overflow or the people leaving the other clubs, and they would come here and eat. They would come to our club and eat. And it's not worth the money.
Well, I think you know what you have to do in order to change the scene out there. And, you know, obviously, we're looking at our options right now. And I'm not going to back down from our options.
I understand.
I wish you well. I hope your business works well. I hope you can do something to change the outcome there. I really do.
I am going to give it everything.
I appreciate you coming down tonight, really.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other general public comment? Seeing none? Come back to the city commission. And we're on future agenda items. Diane, anything to share that needs highlighting?
Just a lot of budget items here related to next week, which is already June 4th. And you have the study session in the afternoon, and then public comment on the budget that evening. As a highlight, there's some other items listed there as well.
Okay. Are there any commission items we need to discuss? Okay. Calendar, pretty straightforward. Looks like it.
What's, what's the ribbon cutting on the 4th?
On the 4th?
Free birds.
Free birds.
Burritos on 741 Mass Street.
I'm out of town on that day till late in the afternoon.
That's at 11:30?
Let me check, Bob. I might be able to do it.
Yeah, I can't, I cannot be there. Sorry, I hadn't seen that before.
Let me, I'll check in the morning. I should be able to do it.
Okay, so you guys will clear up your schedule on that, but you'll be back for our...
Yeah, I'll be back in time for the study session.
Okay. Very good. All right, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Farmer, second by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion passes five zero. Good night.
Need it before eight?
Indeed.